6:22 PM. All right, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Nick, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, you need to tell them that I'll need to come sit towards the front of the call.
Nick's never going to sit there again where he's right in my eyeshot.
I think I just broke my new foot thing.
Hello, everyone. This is so nice. I always think it's, I enjoy these study sessions. And of course, I love it when we have the public in here meeting with us because, you know, it's what we want to do is hear from the public. But this is just a nice cozy, it's like having a family, extended family dinner. I love it. It's good to see everyone. Mrs. Merchant would like for you all to come to the front couple rows right up here. I said Mrs. Merchant because it's not coming from me. You guys can sit where you want to sit. I'm not the boss of your seats. Yes. It's okay.
You're just kidding.
I don't know if she's kidding. I'm just telling you. Oh, I love it. Okay, so we have some very exciting closed session action. Mr. Gonzalez is going to report out.
Thank you, Mrs. Nicola. We have, in closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mrs. Curdi Mesa that the board approve the certificated management employment of Jennifer Hansen to dean with the location to be determined and the effective date to be determined. The motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Barra and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management employment of Erica Teraport to dean Auburndale Intermediate with effective date to be determined. The motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mr. Rahaga and seconded by Mrs. Curdi Mesa that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Carrie Joyce to interim elementary school assistant principal at Harada Elementary School with the effective date of 10/20/25 through June 30 of 2026. The motion carried unanimously. And the last one, in closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Barra and seconded by Mrs. Curdi Mesa that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Nicole DeGrosa to interim middle school assistant principal, El Cerrito Middle School with the effective date of 10/28/25 through June 30/26. The motion carried unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. We have no blue cards, Mr. Johnson? All right. Well, did I just call him Mr. Johnson? I did. Who's Mr. Johnson? I don't either. I don't either. I think this is what happens when your mouth is talking while you're reading at the same time. So perhaps I might want to just do one at a time. Not, I don't even know. Go figure. I love it. You guys don't know who Mr. Johnson? He's sitting in the, never mind. Thank you, Ben. Johnson. Yeah, Ben Johnson. Oh, my goodness. So seeing as we don't have any blue cards, I am not going to read the script because we don't need to do that because we don't have any blue cards. So we are going to be going straight to the presentation to the board. And Dr. Goines will be making that introduction.
Thank you, Madam President. Very excited to be here tonight. Every fall, between the fall and winter, we share our student data with the board. And the timing is always a little interesting because the state decides when they release the data. And that has changed from year to year. And so the state has released some data already. And then there are other pieces of our data dashboard that won't be released till next month. But we really want our board to be the first to know about the great things that are happening here. And so that means tonight we share with you our data. Some of that is actual data release and some is that predicted. And the fabulous Dr. Swelt will talk a little bit about that. But we really think tonight is a celebration. And it's a celebration because we know to raise students, right, to support students, it really does take everyone. And that absolutely starts with the great work that happens with our teachers in the classroom. They work so, so very hard to support each and every student. But it's not just our teachers, right? We have our classified paraprofessionals, all support staffs. We have our administrators, our counselors, right, our SLPs. Every position in our district works to ensure student achievement. And so when we get data back that says our students are growing, we really have to take the time to celebrate it. And that is what tonight is about. We always want to be really honest about our data and celebrate the areas of growth. And then when there are areas that we need to do better, also be honest about that. Luckily, tonight, most of what you hear is about the growth that's happening in our district. And so we know that that is a celebration. And so we're excited to share it. We have the fabulous Dr. Swelt, who leads our division in terms of research evaluation and student data. And so she is here tonight to talk to us about how our students are growing. Dr. Swelt?
Total spoiler. Man, is this, okay. So we are here to look at two different types of data, like Dr. Goines was saying. This is good. We're good. Okay. The first one that we're going to look at is our California Dashboard Predictions. These are predictions only. The dashboard does not release publicly until November 13. And at that point, we'll know for sure where the state lands us. But we have some pretty good predictions. We think they're solid, but you know, things happen. So that will release November 13. Last year, actually, it was November 22. And so every year, they're trying to move it back. Next year, it has to be before or on November 1st. So we keep moving back a little bit earlier, which is really nice. So that's going to be the first half of the presentation. And then it's going to feel like, oh, we're done, but we're not done. Because we're going to dive into one other thing. We're going to dive into the results from test results for California Assessments. And that is actually released data right now. It's open and available for public viewing across the entire state. And so we want to see what that says about our students as well. So two kind of forms of data, but we want to dive into both of them. Now, this is a study session. So when I think about studying, I think, you know, there might be some questions that we need to ask each other, might need some answers. There might be some discussion. And there might be a quiz. I'm just saying, there might be a quiz. Just be prepared. There also may be some AI within the presentation. We just want to kind of give you a heads up that there's some AI coming. And at the end, there is some time to ask questions.
6:22 PM. All right, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Nick, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, you need to tell them that I'll need to come sit towards the front of the car.
Nick's never going to sit there again where he's right in my eyeshot.
I think I just broke my new foot thing.
Hello, everyone. This is so nice. I always think it's, I enjoy these study sessions. And of course, I love it when we have the public in here, meeting with us, because you know, it's what we want to do is hear from the public. But this is just a nice cozy, it's like having a family, extended family dinner. I love it. It's good to see everyone. Mrs. Merchant would like for you all to come to the front couple rows, right up here. I said, Mrs. Merchant, because it's not coming from me. You guys can sit where you want to sit. I'm not the boss of your seats. Yes. It's okay.
You're just kidding.
I don't know if she's kidding. I'm just telling you. Oh, I love it. Okay, so we have some very exciting closed session action. Mr. Gonzalez is going to report out.
Thank you, Mrs. Nicola. We have, in closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Nicola and seconded by Mrs. Curridi Mesa that the board approve the certificated management employment of Jennifer Hansen to dean with the location to be determined and the effective date to be determined. The motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Barra and seconded by Mr. Rahaga that the board approve the certificated management employment of Erica Terapor to dean Auburndale Intermediate with effective date to be determined. The motion carried unanimously. In closed session, a motion was made by Mr. Rahaga and seconded by Mrs. Curridi Mesa that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Carrie Joyce to interim elementary school assistant principal at Harada Elementary School with the effective date of 10/2025 through June 30th of 2026. The motion carried unanimously. And the last one, in closed session, a motion was made by Mrs. Barra and seconded by Mrs. Curridi Mesa that the board approve the certificated management reclassification of Nicole DeGrosa to interim middle school assistant principal, El Cerrito Middle School with the effective date of 10/28/25 through June 30th, 26. The motion carried unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. We have no blue cards, Mr. Johnson? All right, well, did I, did I just call him Mr. Johnson? I did. Who's Mr. Johnson? Who is Mr. Johnson? I don't either. I don't either. I think this is what happens when your mouth is talking while you're reading at the same time, so perhaps I might want to just do one at a time. Not, I don't even know. Go figure. I love it. You guys don't know who Mr. Johnson? He's, he's sitting in the, never mind. Thank you, Ben. Johnson. Yeah, Ben Johnson. Oh, my goodness. So seeing as we don't have any blue cards, we, I am not going to read the script because we don't need to do that, because we don't have any blue cards. So we are going to be going straight to the presentation to the board. And Dr. Goines will be making that introduction.
Thank you, Madam President. Very excited to be here tonight. Every, every fall, between the fall and winter, we share our student data with the board. And that timing is always a little interesting because the state decides when they release the data, and that, that has changed from year to year. And so the state has released some data already, and then there are other pieces of our data dashboard that won't be released till next month. But we really want our board to be the first to know about the great things that are happening here. And so that means tonight, we share with you our data. Some of that is actual data release and some is that predicted. And the fabulous Dr. Swelt will talk a little bit about that. But we, we really think tonight is a celebration. And it's a celebration because we know to, to raise students, right, to support students, it really does take everyone. And that absolutely starts with the great work that happens with our teachers in the classroom. They work so, so very hard to support each and every student. But it's not just our teachers, right? We have our classified paraprofessionals, all support staffs. We have our administrators, our counselors, right, our SLPs, every, every position in our district works to ensure student achievement. And so when we get data back that says our students are growing, we really have to take the time to celebrate it, and that is what tonight is about. We always want to be really honest about our data and celebrate the areas of growth. And then when there are areas that we need to do better, also be honest about that. Luckily, tonight, most of what you hear is about the growth that's happening in our, in our district. And so we, we know that that is a celebration, and so we're excited to share it. We have the fabulous Dr. Swelt, who leads our, our division in terms of research evaluation and, and student data. And so she is here tonight to talk to us about how our students are growing. Dr. Swelt?
Total spoiler. Okay, so we are here to look at two different types of data, like Dr. Goines was saying. This is good. We're good. Okay. The first one that we're going to look at is our California Dashboard Predictions. These are predictions only, the dashboard does not release publicly until November 13. And at that point, we'll know for sure where the state lands us, but we have some pretty good predictions. We think they're solid, but you know, things happen. So that'll release November 13. Last year, actually, it was November 22. And so every year, they're trying to move it back. Next year, it has to be before or on November 1st. So we keep moving back a little bit earlier, which is really nice. So that's going to be the first half of the presentation. And then it's going to feel like, oh, we're done, but we're not done. Because we're going to dive into one other thing. We're going to dive into the results from test results for California Assessments. And that is actually released data right now. It's open and available for publics, public viewing for, across the entire state. And so we want to see what that says about our students as well. So two kind of forms of data, but we want to dive into both of them. Now, this is a study session. So when I think about studying, I think, you know, there might be some questions that we need to ask each other, might need some answers. There might be some discussion, and there might be a quiz. I'm just, I'm just saying, there might be a quiz. Just be prepared. There also may be some AI within the presentation. We just want to, can I give you a heads up? That there's some AI coming. And at the end, there is some time to ask questions as we go here. The other thing I wanted to make sure is really clear is we are talking about data from last, well, from 2025 Spring Testing. So when I say this year, that's what I mean. And I say it often, that's why I kind of want to give you a disclaimer. So if I say this year's data, it is the data that's releasing now, but it's from the test of spring 2025, so same calendar year. If I talk about last year's data, it's 2024 Spring data. So we're comparing those two things. So just, I want to make sure I don't confuse anyone. And we are going to use plants as a bit of an analogy of what it takes to grow students, which is why you have these beautiful plants in front of you. They're from Norco Egg Flower Shop, and so they're yours to take home with you today. Now, before we start, I just want to kind of get a sense, and I want to get Cab to join in here, of how are you with plants? Do you have a green thumb? Do you, are you have, an avid gardener? Do you like to eat them? I like to eat them. So I want you to give me, give me a scale of one, one to five. One is, I don't think people should give me plants because they're a living thing, and I don't think I'm going to do right by them. And five, five is, is I have a greenhouse in my backyard. Please come over. I will teach you how to fertilize. Okay, what are you? Where are you? Look at Glenn. Dang. Mary, what, what are you? There's a one? One to five? Oh, yeah, that's me too. I think I'm a two. That's a two, yeah. If you can water a cactus once a month, I think you're a two. I can, yeah, I might be down to a one now. Yes. Okay. So, so we are all over the board on plants. Apparently, if we need lessons, Glenn is here. Glenn is here for us. So we are going to ask you some questions. Let's see how we do on just knowledge of plants. There's a few things plants need in order to be healthy and to grow. I even put pictures just to help those of us who are, you know, like around here. Anyone know what the first one is? Okay, we need, we need some air. Maybe carbon dioxide? Something like that, right? We need some air. Okay. What's the next one? Sun. How come? So they can grow. What is the process called? Yeah, okay, I was a bio teacher. This is, it's coming out now, right? Photosynthesis. Look at Melissa. She remembers. She just graduated. Okay, the third one, what's the third one? You guys got this? Water, yes. The last one? What's the last one? Okay, Glenn says is soil, so I think it's soil, dirt, there's some nutrients in the dirt that are from manure and the other things. You guys are great. You guys got this. See? They also need a little space for the roots too, right? Little elbow room. I'm going to propose this is not too much different than students need. We also know that when we look at plants, we can tell kind of by looking whether they're healthy. So shiny leaves, constant growth, flowering, like the ones in front of you, usually means they have nice, healthy roots and someone's taking care of them. I have some in my office that prove I'm a two. Because they don't have those characteristics right now, so. But there's ways to measure plant health. What does students need? Students need positive climate at school, so they feel comfortable and they feel safe and they feel ready to learn. They need engaging academics, they need support when they need it, when they're struggling, and they need some options to keep them interested. And this is very much like air. The air we breathe is essential, right? It's, it's like the positive climate. Engaging academics is the sun that kind of allows them to grow. The support, we know that when plants have water, it allows them not to wilt and to stand up straight, so that support is like water. And the options are like the nutrients in the soil that allow students to really thrive in something that interests them. And how do we know if students are healthy? Well, the California Dashboard tries to set the certain criteria to tell whether or not schools or districts or student groups are healthy, right? So one of the ways they measure it is suspension rate. It's the K-12 suspension rate. Another way, they look at academic outcomes on the state tests, which are English Language Arts, Math, Science, and then also the ALPAC test, which measures progress for English learners. They look at attendance for K-8 and grad rate for high school. And they look at the college and career indicator, which is also when students graduate, how prepared are they for college and career? So those are the measures we see on the dashboard. And those measures align to things that we value. We value equity and access. We value literacy in math. MTSS is that support system, and we, of course, want to always make sure our schools are safe. So why do we have this California Dashboard? This is a direct quote from Californyschooldashboard.org, and it is to help parents and educators identify strengths and areas for improvement. California reports how districts, schools, including alternative schools and student groups are performing across the state and in local measures. So that is the purpose of the dashboard. We're supposed to use the data to make decisions and to make things better for students. So that's why we're here. So what does the California Dashboard look at? It looks at two things: current year results, and by current, spring of 2025, and how that compared to the prior year. So two different things that the dashboard is always looking at at the same time. Here's what our dashboard looks like for 2024. So keep this, keep in mind, that is the spring of 2024 test. This is the current public data for Corona and Norco Unified. And you can see there are some indicators on there with a little gauge that points to a color. And there are seven indicators with gauges. So those are the seven that the state uses a specific grid to tell us what color we are, because they want to know how we're doing and how we're growing. And then we have five indicators. Those are local indicators. So those are indicators that we will report out every June. So in June, Charlotte, what was it, 18th, somewhere like that? June 17th, this last year, Charlotte and I did a presentation on local indicators. Then we upload that to state, and then that stuff shows up in the dashboard on November 13. So just kind of the process that we go through. So you had first, first dibs on those five. So let's talk really quickly about these colors. We know red is the worst, the lowest performance, and blue is the highest performance. How in the world does the state come up with these colors? Right? That's what we want to know. Okay, this is where the study part comes in. The study session part. And this is what the quiz will be on. Be prepared. Here's what it is. This is a five by five grid. And this is the type of grid that California State uses to figure out what color we are as, as a school district or each site is, or each school group is in our district. It looks at both status and change. And here's what happens. On the left-hand side, it talks about how high our students are in each indicator. And across the top, it tells how we changed from one year to the next. Okay, so you would first of all, look at whether or not, where you are in the status, and that'll tell you which row you're in. And then you'll look at how you did across the top, and you'll connect the row and the column, and that gives you the square that tells you the color. Can you tell the quiz is coming soon? Quiz is coming soon. There's a couple more things you need to know before we get to the quiz. First of all, there are a lot of five by fives in the state of California that we use. There are seven colored gauges on the dashboard, but 14 five by five grids. That's because the state realizes that LEAs are not all the same. Sometimes there's elementary districts, there's high school districts, and there's K-12 districts. And to use the same grid for all those districts is not really fair to somebody. Right? Same thing for elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. Sometimes their grids are not the same. Particularly in the field of suspension. The five by fives are totally different for each level of school because each level of school has a different need for that. And 14 five by fives is not going to be the end. There are science ones coming. They're not out yet. We have some prediction of colors because there's a, the state has approved one, but it's not actually public yet, so. There's more coming. And there's one more thing you need to know before your quiz. There's this random unit that we use on the dashboard. It's called DFS. It's distance from standard. We use it specifically for math and English Language Arts. Distance from standard is how far, it's a measure, how far is a student from where they should be at that grade level? So the state has picked the line and said, every kid should at least be here. And then they measure how far is a student from that line. They might be below the line, or they might be above the line. But they always measure, and then they take an average of all the distance from threes for every single kid, and that gives you either a student group distance from three, or a school distance from three, or a whole entire district, district from three. Distance from three. And parents actually have this information for their children every single year. This is called a student score report. And on the student score report, it tells, this is a fake student, we're not releasing student information here. This is just a sample one. Jenny had 2540 this year on English Language Arts. And the little dotted line in the middle tells you what the standard was for Jenny in fifth grade. So she is above the line. And it tells the parent on the bottom, the score range is da-da-da, and the score of 2502 or higher meets the standard. Now, the nice thing about the student score report that parents have access to in queue under the testing section is they also have access to three years of data. And Jenny has done an amazing job. She has moved on up over third, fourth, and fifth. So three years of data, as long as the student is in fifth grade or beyond, because the test starts in third grade. So that's distance from standard. How are we doing? We good? Ready for the quiz? Excellent. Okay, at the very back of your folder, there is a five by five. You are going to use the five by five. Now, I will, I'll be nice. It's open book test, it's a talk to your neighbor quiz, it's worth no points, so you know, no, no fear. Let's, let's see how we do. Wow. Wow. Okay, no, it's all good. Okay, so let's, let's see if you can find it. Let's see if you can actually find it. So here's what we have. Using the math five by five table, which is the one that's in the back of your folder, predict what color Corona and Norco Unified would be if our current year is negative 24.4 distance from standard, and our level of change was a positive 6.3 distance from standard. You can talk to your friends. You should all talk to your friends. You have different answers. Okay. How many people think it is red? Nope. Orange? Yellow? We, we asked teachers this today. We had a few yellows. We had a few yellows. Green? Blue? It is indeed green. It is green. So let's walk through how we found it, just in case someone's watching who doesn't, doesn't get it, right? So current year results, negative 24.4, fit in the medium category because negative 25 up to zero. So from zero to negative 25 goes in that very middle row. Quick question, how close are we to not in medium? We're super close. So this is where I remind you, this is a prediction, and 0.6 is really close. So we're hoping we're right. And then, so we, we find we're in the middle row. So here's the middle row. Then we look at the top for the results improved from the prior year by 6.3. So we look at the very top, and we find increase from prior year, three to 15. Six lands in between three and 15. So that's the column we want to go down. So when we go down that column, we're right there on that green square right there. Okay, so that's how the five by fives work. You passed your quiz. Congratulations. Way to go. So now we can actually dive into all the things. Oh, wait. There's the disclaimer again. The dashboard doesn't release till November 13. So we're not supposed to talk about it and celebrate it and do all the things. Here's the rule: no celebrating, no bragging, no social media posting over here in the corner, over here. I know, press releases, no. Wait, Nick, what did you do? What, oh, my goodness, people, we have to tune in. Hang on.
Corona Norco Unified School District is in the business of growing successful students, and today, we get a sneak peek at outcomes.
Keep in mind, these data points are only predictions of what will be on the California Dashboard. Back to you in the boardroom.
Oh, dang, right? There it is. They didn't even have five fingers, three eyes, nothing. Those are AI-generated people. I, I might have shown it to someone in my family, and they're like, that's a handsome guy. And I'm like, that's not a guy. So, okay, so we're going to talk about the estimates right now. We're going to dive in. Academic outcomes are what we're going to talk about first. So when we look at English Language Arts, we see a status of 14.6. That's positive. That means we're above the line of what we would expect kids to have at each grade level. And that's an increase of 6.1 distance from standard. Okay. We'll allow celebrating for tonight only, only tonight. If this is correct, we look very green on the dashboard, which is good. On to math. Math, we are still below what we should be at a grade level. We're negative 24.4, so we're still working there. But we saw a gigantic gain, 6.3 gain in distance from standard. Yep, we can celebrate that one too, in here. Last one, science. Science is brand new to the dashboard. Last year, we had numbers, but no colors and no indication of how we were really doing. This year, the state board has actually adopted some type of a five by five, so we have a way to try to predict a color. So, science. We have 59.8, and notice, that's not distance from standard. We, we, we have science points. I'll come back to you next year with more information about science points, because it's something new. But we're growing in science nonetheless, 5.2 points up, and we actually expect to be blue in the dashboard for science, which is good. Okay. When we look at a three-year average distance from standard, this is what we see. That orange line is English Language Arts. As you can see, from three years ago, last year, two years ago, and last year, we see a steady increase from four to 13.62 distance from standard. That is a really good jump. Okay, the caste test is the science test. That's the blue one. And so as you can see, we didn't, we weren't measuring, we didn't have it on the dashboard until last year with the number, so we were kind of pretty level. Now that it's starting to show up on dashboard, there's more attention to it. Now that it's starting to show up on dashboard, there's more attention to it. And we're seeing a nice increase, which is really nice. And on the very bottom, we have math. And over a three-year trajectory, that is an impressive slope right there. When we move on to, oh, we're not moving on. Hang on, one more thing. Sometimes people wonder if, you know, that one standout school carried the whole district. So we looked into it. Let's see how schools did. We actually saw in the English language arts, 78% of our sites saw increases in distance from standard. That's amazing. And in math, very close, 72% of sites with increases. So we're, we're very happy with that. Okay, so on to the next indicator. This is the English language proficiency indicator. And this is based on the LPAC test. And on the top, you can see there's four levels on the LPAC test. Level one, two, three and four. And the LPAC test is taken every year from February through June. And it is scored on listening, speaking, reading and writing for every grade from kinder up to 12th grade. As long as you're an English learner, you take the test. The state has actually said, you know, four levels, that's not really enough. It takes more than four years for a student to gain a new language. It takes more like six years. So they added a couple extra little levels. They added a two low and a two high and a three low and a three high in there so that it actually will take six years for a student to become proficient in English. And then they look at the LPAC test and they say, how are you doing in Corona Norco with your English learners, moving them one level? And this is our status, 48.3. We actually saw a decline of 1.8%. So we're seeing a yellow indicator probably on the dashboard on that one. Our LTALs, these are any student who has been an English learner for longer than six years. We have a 49% status, but that is a drop of 3% from the prior year. So we expect orange on that indicator. When we look at climate and engagement, for suspension rate, we saw a 2.6% suspension rate last year. That is K-12. That is a decline of 1.6%. We expect that to be green indicator. Chronic absenteeism, we saw 12.4% chronic absenteeism across K-8. And that is a slight decline of 0.2%. Still is going to leave us in orange on chronic absenteeism. As you can see, chronic absenteeism three years ago was very high. We saw a nice drop last year and now it's kind of leveled out a little bit. Suspension rate is a constant decline. When we look at broad courses study, this is specifically for high schools. We're looking at graduates. For graduation rate, we have 95.9%. That's a slight drop of 0.4%. It still keeps us in blue. It is actually just 11 more students that did not graduate or finish high school in a traditional way. We have at least nine extra students who left with the exit exam, the Chesapeake. So that's, that's a few of them right there. The college and career indicator is something we looked at a lot last year to make sure when students graduate high school, they are actually prepared for college and career. And we are currently expecting a status of about 56.1%. That is a huge gain of 7.6%. When we look at that on a graph, you can see high school graduation rate is pretty steady across the board there. And CCI is coming closer and closer to that grad rate. We would really love CCI to be very, very close to that grad rate so that every student who graduates is considered prepared for college and career. So it's a nice trajectory right now. It looks very, very promising. California has done a good job at measuring whether or not students are growing in each district. And in Corona Norco, it looks like we're growing really fabulous kids.
In CNUSD, every child can succeed.
Also, not a real child. Okay. That was section one. Remember, we were going to do two sections. Section two, this is actually released data. This is from test results for California assessments. We're not going to talk exactly about the same things. We're going to dive in deeper. This data is released in October each year. And it does talk about proficiency, whether or not students made it to their grade level standard or not. And it gives us a percent. So we're going to talk about English language arts, math and science. And we're going to target in on student groups as well. So when we look at English language arts, 58% of our students are proficient at their grade level, which is an increase of two and a half percent. Math, 43% increase of two and a half. Science, 39 increase of three and a half. And now what I want you to do is look at what the state is getting. 58% for us in ELA and 49 for the state. That's good. 43% in math for us, 27% in the state. 39% in science for us, 33 in the state. So we're doing well. So then the next question is, where are we seeing the most growth? The test actually grow, assesses a few different things. So English language arts assesses reading, writing, listening and research. This is a graph of how much growth we saw in each of those areas between the two years. You will notice in English language arts, every single area sees growth. That is fabulous. Now let's compare it to pre-COVID because that's what the press is doing right now. Let's talk about the gap, right? Compared to pre-COVID, Corona Norco is higher than our 2019 numbers in reading, listening and research. The only one we're still behind our pre-COVID numbers on is writing. And let's go backwards. Look what our biggest growth is, writing. So you can see we're working. We still got a little ways to go, but we're working. Now let's talk about math. These are the three things that are measured in math. Concepts and procedures, we're doing well. Problem solving, I'm reading it backwards. Problem solving is doing okay. You can see the only one where we dipped a little bit last year is communicating reasoning. So we're going to work on that one. Compared to pre-COVID, we are higher than 2019 in concepts and procedures, problem solving and modeling. And we are 0.03% behind 2019 in communicating reasoning. And looks like we dropped more than that. So we were ahead of it last year. So we are, we are doing very well compared to what we were in 2019. We, we've closed the gap. That's good. Science by claim, these are the science claims that we look at. Life science, physical science, earth and space. Once again, growth in each one of the different domains. And last, we're almost done. Last thing we want to look at is how are our students, student groups doing? Student groups will be on our dashboard, but they're also currently in test results for California schools. So I looked at the percent proficient by every single student group and checked out whether or not they grew from the year prior. So in English language arts, that zero line on this graph is what they had. That would mean they did not grow at all, right? So if there's a dot on the zero line, that means this student group did not grow from the year prior. If there's a dot below the line, like our homeless students, that means our students actually went backwards, right? They, they are less proficient than they were the year before in the homeless group. Look at our foster group. Massive growth in English language arts this year. We should be clapping. And look at how many student groups are above that zero line. Those are all, those are all student groups who saw growth in English language arts, English language art proficiency last year. Ready for math? So people over here are clapping. Why are you clapping? They're all above the line except for one. That means every student group saw growth except for one. Now, it doesn't mean we should ignore the one. By no means would I ever suggest that. That is definitely a place we need to focus. But we also need to make sure we celebrate all those student groups who are making amazing gains. And science, here comes science. Once again, almost all our student groups above the line. Our foster group, very small group again, is below the line. So that's definitely a place we need to target. So now what do we do? We celebrate in this room and then we wait till the dashboard comes out. And we keep moving. Obviously, what we've been doing so far is moving the needle for kids. Kids are growing. They're growing in many different areas. We are very excited about what the, the data is saying over what has been happening in the last few years. So same goals, just a little more soul, right?
The projected growth in CNUSD is attributed to amazing dedicated staff helping students grow and develop in each of these areas. Thanks for tuning in. Good night.
Okay, time, time for questions.
That was great. Wonderful presentation, as usual. Dr. Schwell, great job. I always think that you, and I have to say, Charlotte, I always give Charlotte props for being able to present really complex data in a really understandable way. Charlotte, of course, does it with LCAP and you always do it with, with, for us with this every year. And I think it's, you just do a really great job because it's really, it is really confusing. I think what I struggle with a little bit with some of this data, I mean, I know it's important and we need to have, and data is great. But I think there's, there's factors even just in test-taking parameters and just, there's so many things I think that goes into some of these tests. And so I think it's important metrics to be aware of, but I also know that there's factors that we can't really account for. But I appreciate it. I love the theme. I've, I'm, it's something I now look forward to every year. I go back to the first year of the starfish on the ocean and on the beach. That was so fun. But I love the plants and I love the, the analogy. I think, I think it's always great to see how you pull it all together. And you did a great job and your team does great work. And kudos to everyone for the improvements. I think that's great to see. So that being said, I will open it up to the board for whatever comments, questions that they might have.
Now, I'm just going to say that it's great to see that progress is being made. I just have one question though. Back at the beginning of this, where it shows standards met. And for example, I'm just wondering like parent and family engagement. Do you know how they measure that? How do you measure whether that standard is met?
So on, those are on local indicators. So Charlotte is really good at speaking to that. Local indicators are actually listed as met on the, on the dashboard if we submit information to them. So as long as we submit something, the dashboard says we met it.
Okay.
So. But then if you click into it, it'll tell you all the things that we reported out to the board each year.
Okay, on student growth. I see the LTAL is very low. So how are we going to bring these kids up?
So I have good news. Next board meeting, you have a presentation just on English learners. Where they will talk about that. Jeremy, you want to?
What, as we look at all of our student groups and all the growth, the, the thing that really jumped out for us, we, obviously, we want to celebrate all the positive. But being very clear that our LP was not what it, it needs to be and our LTALs are struggling. So that was, that jumped out, the data did for us. And so Mr. Flores is coming back next time to talk about the great work that's happening. We are seeing growth at some sites, but we know that we really need to make that district-wide. And we also know that as a district, when we focus on something, we move the needle. So we need to refocus on our, our ELs and our LTALs. And so next, next meeting, we will come to you with more specifics about that focus.
How are they falling through the cracks?
Yeah, I, I think when we look at the data, what we've seen is there are some years we'll go up and some years we'll go down. The range that we've been in has really been a kind of two and 3% range. So I think that next, what you'll see in our next presentation will be some, some data and even some student voice asking that same question. We, Mr. Flores and a group of educators from across our district actually went out to a school and brought students in and asked some of our ELs, you know, that, that very question, right? What do they need? What do they fill their need? So that is information that we'll be bringing to next, next, it's not a study session. It's our next business meeting.
So do we need more money to put more teachers, paras? I don't know, somebody to help them? Because I know there's some schools that have like Saturday school to help these kids, but not every school does it. So are those the schools that the kids are falling through the cracks or, I mean, I know it's.
No, it's a great, it's an excellent question. And really getting to the, what are our best practices that, that support student growth? I think that is, is part of the question, is part of what we will bring to the next study session. But we do know some of those best practices. And we have a fabulous team here at the district office that supports the sites. But, but I think to really fully answer that question, I would want to wait for our next study session. But you're asking the right questions and I assure you that we will bring back your, your answers to that and recommendations as well.
To go off of that, I have a specific question that I had had. And since we're going to be having a, I guess, the next board meeting. So if Carlos is listening, please, if he's not here, have him watch this. Here's my specific question. What factors are contributing to the trend and what professional development or curriculum adjustments are being made to strengthen the ELD instruction and the reclassification
Thank you for the presentation. It's always good to see when there's positive growth, right? I would love to see the number of students that each group, that, that, that represents in each group. So, you know, when there's the dip in our English language learners, if we could see that in the number of students, that way it just really puts a face, almost a name, right? It really puts to all of us like, okay, that's 235 students or it's two, you know, depending on, on what it is. Because, yeah, or. Six, seven students or something. No, so, but that would, it would be so, it, it makes it more personal, I guess. And really just, you know, seeing the amount of students that it's actually affecting, I think would be more impactful for us. And, or knowing that it may just be three or five, you know, five. Then that would also help us look at, look at the data and realize, okay, maybe it's not as big of a problem, right? And I would really like that in all of, every aspect of it. So when we're talking about 58% proficient, how many students does that mean, right? And, and how many students does that mean that are not proficient, right? If, just to grasp that data in terms of the student numbers, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, we can do that.
So you, you spoke briefly about if a student tests out of graduation, they count against our graduation rate?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Okay.
Just to add to that, Ms. Raga is, there are other folks that, that, that are transitions, our TR students, our students that transition, who have, our ESN students that transition into the adult program, they also would be, count against our graduation rate. So when we look at the graduation rate, to your point around it being a small number of students, we definitely, every student matters when we talk about graduation rate. And so we really, it's important for us to stay in the blue and keep in that high status. We know there will be slight fluctuations because there are some things that are out of our scope. But it is, again, if we just continue to take the, the approach that every student on there matters and our goal is to get everyone graduated, then, then that, that percentage will stay where, where it needs to be.
I wouldn't be opposed to seeing the percentage if we took out those students. because I think they're doing, I think the point is, you know, they understood the, they had the, right? They had the tools, they understood what they were learning enough to test out. And so, if they passed it, right? I mean, yeah, so they're, you know, they have the skills. If we could get our own graduation rate, you know, looking at it that way, that would be beneficial too, just to understand. So the college and career readiness, I know, and I think I've asked this before, how are we, how do we determine that number again?
There are a whole bunch of different ways a student can become qualified. I think it's eight different ones at this point. And so as long as a student meets one of those, they are considered college and career ready. So a lot of them are graduate, get a two or a three on the S back, and have a CTE pathway. Or graduate, get AP courses, two AP courses. This year, it's just pass the courses, not pass the test, right? So there's just these little pieces that say, if you're doing a rigorous course of study, or if you're doing some type of learning that allows you to be super marketable when you leave, because nowadays you can do that, then we are going to say you're college and career ready.
We can get you the specific chart. Dr. Schwell said it well. It is everyone must graduate. And then it's a combination of different factors like A through G, CTE, test scores, dual enrollment, seal of biliteracy. So lots of different ways. It is really a shift, and we think, we appreciate the shift because it says there are lots of ways for a rigorous high school experience. And our counselors, I just gave the opportunity, I mean, that shift, that large shift was very intentional through the work of our counselors on site, really focusing that on as a goal. And so it was definitely a victory. I mean, it takes all, it takes our teachers, it takes all. But they focus on that as a goal. And again, when we focus on something, we see growth.
I would love, I know I just spoke about graduation rate, but I would love to see us focus more on the college and career readiness indicator because I think it's setting up students for success once they leave. And it doesn't necessarily mean that they're just graduating, but it actually, hopefully being a successful, you know, member of society once they graduate. So, you know, I think it's, I don't like, the state changes the goalpost so often and changes things so often, so it's difficult to, you know, rely on what they're going to say next year, you know, because there seems to be always changing it just a little bit. So, but a focus on college and career readiness is, I think, super important. And then I would have loved to actually have seen the results. I know you said we are doing better than pre-COVID, correct?
Yes.
But I would have loved to see actually what, you know, where we were at. Ultimately, we are doing way better than the state comparison, so that's good. But we still have, you know, a lot of work to do. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And it's amazing and very exciting, all the positive growth that we are doing, especially with the pre-pandemic numbers. I do have a couple, a few questions. Do you know what the, for the students with disabilities, are we still going to be in the red?
So that's a small student group. I mean, it's not tiny, tiny, but it's very small. So it's very likely that estimates could be wrong. So we want to wait for dashboard to come out. I do not predict red, but we also don't want to bet on our predictions because the smaller the group, the more likely the error happens, right? So on November 13th, we'll know for sure, but I don't think so.
The next one is, I know that with MTSS, that we're really pushing that out and starting to do it more. How quickly and how effectively are we identifying and responding to the students who are struggling before they fall behind?
You want me to answer?
Yeah, I think that's a really important question. One of the things that, you know, we have, one of the things we do annually, and even throughout the year sometimes, is we come up and we celebrate our schools that have received like PBIS Gold and Platinum. Those are all measures of implementation of MTSS. And so what you'll see is you go school site to school site. We do have at all of our school sites, MTSS teams meeting, they are reviewing student data, and they are responding with intervention. And we have, you know, our TSAs are part of that work, right? TSA is particularly in the elementary and our intermediate math work. And so every school has a system for that response. And we're really proud of that. But always, we, you know, we aim to get better. And then really to firm up what are the academic interventions in MTSS. That is the work that we've been, that we've been doing.
Are there any additional resources that you think that would be beneficial for interventions, instructional aids, for the subcategories that we're like declining in?
I think the world's our oyster, right? There are always things that we could try, throw at a problem, see if it works. But we do want to be super strategic to make sure it really meets the need of the students and the root cause for the issue, right? So I think that's the key piece. We really want to make sure we get the action right instead of just throwing too many things at a problem. So there is a lot of work going on right now with root cause and how can we do these things? Having great conversations, I've been in with math teachers for a couple days, great conversations about how we can meet the needs of all students in math. And those conversations are fabulous for finding tools that might help, or maybe PD, or maybe whatever. So we need to do a little digging and find out exactly where our need is, and then maybe.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And what I would add is that we have been going through kind of a strategic system to when we see student need, right? And we've been working, partnering with the county to do that work and analysis. That was work, we call it strategic leadership, and it's intentional schools that need support or showing areas that need growth. And that was work that started with Dr. Casper and now continues with Dr. Gonzalez. And so, and then also with Mr. Flores. And so what we've seen, a great example is Mr. Flores, last year, had three groups that went through this process for our EL students. All of those groups grew, right? We see that our groups and differentiated assistants that focus on our special ed students, and they also grow. And they grow because they use, they apply resources to that. So there's not a blanket, there's not a blanket answer to that. But if we go through that process and we look deeply as what does this school need, that's when we find out, yes, we need additional para support, or yes, we need additional interventions that we can purchase or bring folks in. I mean, that is the work that is ongoing.
Because I believe as a board, that's very important for us, is a high priority. So we don't want the lack of things or services to prevent growth or to not help it. So, and then my next question, I did, it was, it's the 24 data, so it's not the current data because it's not out yet. But I did notice for the college and career readiness, just for our three subcategories, the foster, long-term English language learners and student with disabilities. To give you an example, so out of 108 foster youth that tested in other, this is ELA, only 36 were college and career ready. For long-term English learners, there was 958, but only 423 were college and career ready. And then for students with disabilities, there are 3,686, but only 504 were college-ready. So what are we doing to make sure that those subcategories are also becoming college and career-ready?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great, excellent point. And so because that is 24 data, one of the things that you'll see as part of that growth that we've seen this year in CCI and that we will see is because we've intentionally targeted subgroups with Dr. Shirley's leadership. Our counselors have been, they've written goals specific to subgroups. I think we just had a statewide article published on the work that is happening, CCI and subgroups for CNUSD, which we can share with you. But we've been very intentional about those subgroups. So when we get CCI, we'll be very interested in seeing the growth in those subgroups. But we have been very intentional about targeting those subgroups.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I just hope that this meeting is not going to include follow-up on how my plan does.
Okay.
Okay. Yikes. Yeah. Yay! That's, okay. All right. Moving into our consent items, do we have any items that the board would like to highlight? Do we have any that would like to be polled? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Chris. By a show of hands, do you approve? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Made by Mary, seconded by Chris. Show your hand says yes.